I'd like to welcome everybody here to the October 22nd, the Christiansburg Town Council. And Mayor Barber cannot be here tonight, so I'm sitting in for him. And before we really start the meeting, I would just like to say, how about those hokeys? First thing I would like to do, every meeting, we have a reflection, and we have a few seconds to think about the things. And I would like to maybe present that just recently Omar Roth passed away. And Omar was a coach and principal at Christiansburg High School. He later was the superintendent of schools at Floyd County. And he's also the president of the Veterans of Foreign Wars and retired colonel in the Army Reserve. So I'd like you to think about Omar and/or anything else that you have. So we just have a moment here of reflection. And thank you very much. Now, if you would, please stand and have Michelle Walter, Leeson, and the Pledge of Belief.
A pledge of belief is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited in justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda for tonight?
Yes, sir, I have two I would like to make, please.
Okay.
Number one, I would like for us to introduce the new employees before we get into the public hearing. That's number one. Number two, under discussion and action by mayor and council, I would like to add a special event permit application for a street closure for the 2019 Veterans Day Parade.
Okay.
Because we will not be lead again to 11, 12, 19, and the duration, you know, I think 11, 11, in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second concerning the veterans parade. Is it all right if I put that under discussion and after action by mayor and council and make it number F? Would that be all right?
Yes, sir, that's what I said, please.
Now, in regards to the introduction to the new personnel, I don't think I have to have any motion on that, but I would be happy to do that as of right now. And have several that are going to be introduced. And I think we have two from the -- my notes, sir. Public Works, thank you very much. If one of you would come up here now, please.
Hello, my name is Mike McUsman. I'm the town board coordinator, so right away, foreman. I have one new employee today. His name is Tim Bowman. Tim came from us from temp. He was temp all year long, did a really great job for us. He's mowed for Randy's Lawn Service and Radford University, so has a lot of experience mowing. It's a really great find for us, and he's done a great job. We're really excited about it.
Thank you very much. And we have another introduction, too, from Public Works?
Yes, sir. I'm Roger Leonard. I'm the facility maintenance supervisor. I would like to first welcome and introduce Rosa Pistori to the town of Christiansburg and also town council. Rosa has two sons, two grandchildren. She enjoys volunteer work with the church and enjoys working with the elderly. Rosa, since coming to the town, has proven to be an asset to the town of Christiansburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I know Human Resources also has someone. Would you like to make your presentation now?
Yes, please. So I'd like to introduce Leslie Rinder. She is a resident of Christiansburg and married to Sergio Rinder, a former linebacker for Virginia Tech. Leslie's originally from St. Louis, Missouri. She graduated from Liberty University with a bachelor's degree in business administration. She was previously a service facilitator with the Department of Medicaid Services. At one part, she was a CNA, worked way up to special education assistant and then HR generalist. Her hobbies are horseback riding, hiking. She has two horses, Val and adopted Zanzig, who was named after a heavy metal band from the 80s and 90s, from a rescue. Thank you very much.
Now, would you like to make your presentation now, or you want to wait where you normally do it at?
The presentation on the podium?
Yes.
Right, okay, fine.
We have several public hearings tonight, and we're going to start off with that. There are six of them. The very first one is a conditional use permit. It's a request by Jeff Anderson for property owned by J&amp;R Land Development LLC, Richard Brooks, for a towing service on 2230 Prospect Drive Northeast and the I-2 General Industrial District. Is anybody here to speak for that?
I am, sir.
All right. If you would, take the podium there. If you would, introduce yourself and then end your address.
My name is Jeff Anderson. I'm an AR stowin', and I currently live at 130 Fisher Street, where I'm currently at the owner selling the property. So I went looking for another location to put a tow lot in the right spot where I think would fit the community. And I'll just listen to y'all.
Does anybody on council have any questions for him?
I do. We currently have some discussions about our concern for towing cars being piled up, and, you know, they're not behind a fence and they're open. Can you maybe take a minute and talk about the intention for you to keep it tidy?
Yeah, well, the town has rules. It does have to be behind a fence, and it's got to be screened in, and you've got to follow the town rules, because if not, they can take you right out the tow bus. And my plans are is keep everything like I have in the past. I've owned a tow company since 2000, and everything the town has been, had to, I have done really quick. But the biggest thing was the screen, and I had it one time, it blew off, and I fixed it right away. I ordered more screen and put it right back up. I mean, if there's anything the town asks for, we've got to go by duty, they take you off the tow bus.
Where are you located right now?
I'm at 2000 Run-up Street, getting behind the Maltz Place there. It's kind of hard to, it's the old, the old horse loaner company, and I've just got to have a part of that, and a part of it's not mine. And I know the town has a problem with Randy, the guy that owns it. Some of the cars are not mine. The cars I have, I got paperwork on, and as soon as we get paperwork on, we crush the cars.
This is just a general question, but Jeff, I've always heard you in the town has more towing companies than we do gas stations. Can you weigh in on that while we have some way?
Yes, I can. We just got the fifth one towing company here in Christiansburg, and they just got added to the list. But most of the towing company does have two different businesses for, if you could be on a rotation twice versus once. And as far as the town, the county, and the state police. And a lot of us tow companies, we don't have garages like Tow to Car Care. We just do towing, and that's it. But like Tow to Car Care, they got their own shop and everything. We do not do that. I don't personally.
But the market's out there to support these.
Yes, it's, and you need, it's hard to find somebody that tow a car and be reasonable. A lot of it, that's why the town took a price list that you've got to go by, keep a price gouging, and I think that's the best idea ever.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anybody in the audience who has any comments concerning the towing service? If you would, you can get up and say a few words. Or if there are none, I'm going to move on to the second public hearing. It's a rezoning request by Magnolia Point Community LLC, owned by the International Church of the Four Square Gospel. It's located at the intersection of Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest and the New Village Drive Northwest. The request is to rezone the approximately 1.14 acre property from A agriculture to R3 multifamily residential with proffers. And is there anybody here to speak to that? Yes, please get up and address your name and your organization.
Hi, my name is Robert Frayland. I'm at 519 Clydesdale in Roanoke, 24014. I want to thank you, Mr. Hubbard, and members of town council for hearing us tonight. I'll be fairly brief. I bring Brian up for a reason. I want to briefly introduce our team and the project, and Brian's going to go into some more detail. Brian was hired four and a half years ago and has made a remarkable difference in our business, and I think, I don't think he'd be given credit where credit's due if I didn't acknowledge him publicly, because we've grown and we've had a really good success story, and he's provided a lot of organization and leadership to the business, and I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Obviously, Steve Semonis, who all of you know and probably respect as much as I do, will be here, and he'll handle all the technical questions that you may have and present some of the requests. I also want to tell you, I met her the first time, Ms. Rupp. We did New River Village together back in 2001, and I think I can speak for her, and she's said, if I knew how young you are, I wouldn't have done it. And so, but we just had a nice conversation. Thanks for being here. Thank you, Teresa. First of all, obviously, this fits the comp plan, but that doesn't mean everything. We feel like we've done our homework. We feel like we trust traffic, and I can tell you in absolute good faith that there's a need for what we're proposing here. It's very nice, great accountler top, Brian will get into that, plus it makes you refinish the whole clubhouse. So I truly believe there's not only demand, but it fits the plan and that it fits the traffic safety perspective. And having said all that, I'm going to leave this to Steve, and we obviously will answer any questions that you have. We appreciate you hearing this. We know it's going to be a long night, and we don't want to keep you here any longer than possible, but we want to give you all the information that you need. So thank you.
Good evening. Steve Semonis of Ballser and Associates. As Robert mentioned, we're the civil survey firm helping on the development project itself. What I'm going to do, and I'll turn it over to Brian here in just a minute to talk more about the specifics of the actual projects and the building. I want to just walk council through and pump it through the project itself, where it's located, a little bit of background, and where we're asking council to go with the decision tonight. So the property we're looking at is right here, this box right here. This is the existing conditions on the plan. This is Pepper's Ferry. This is New Village Drive, which leads you back into New River Village. This property, as Robert was just stating, was part of the original purchase when Robert began to develop New River Village. Several years ago, he sold it to the Church of the Four Square and is since, you know, under contract to buy back from him to do some residential housing on this piece of property. So when New River Village was originally done back in 2001, 2002, there was always an intent and understanding that this property would be redeveloped in the future or developed in the future. The Four Square has had it for sale for several years, and we've looked at it over the years for some different commercial residential uses. It just didn't work out for one reason or another. But the project we're looking at tonight fits with the comprehensive plan, as Robert stated, and we feel really good about the project we're presenting. The project right now, the property we're in house is owned agriculture. It was not part of the rezoning request when New River Village went in. That was zoned for an R3 with a planned housing development on it, but this parcel here, this nine acres that we're talking about, was left in agricultural at that time. The zoning we're asking for is a similar, it's an R3 with a planned housing development tag onto it. And switch to, can you switch to the next page? So again, a review of where we are, Pepper's Ferry again, and New Village Drive. The townhomes, you see right off the edge of the page here, the last phase of New River Village, it was just recently finalized. They're occupied now. The project has been finished up, but that's the property line right there between this nine acres and what was the New River Village townhomes. So what we're looking at with this layout, apartment complex development here and 14 townhomes. We've got 132 units proposed and 14 townhomes. Again, looking at the density, that's about 15 acres or 15 units per acre, which is under the thresholds that are allowed with the planned housing district that we're requesting tonight. Again, it's residential and comprehensive plan, as I said, you know, development was always planned for each parcel in the early goings of New River Village. Very few modifications. The planned housing development language allows you to make modifications to town code to kind of set your own zoning district. Very few modifications have been asked for in this. We've tried to hold as much to the normal multifamily code within the Christiansburg town ordinances. Couple items to point out. Bozeman Trail, this would be a new road right here on the south side, Page South. Part of the original New River Village zoning requirements, part of their proffer plan was within those proffers, it's stated, when this property were to develop, a secondary access would be brought out into 114. So when the townhomes back here were developed several years ago, the first section of the 50-foot right of way to full town street were put in off of New Village Drive and extended and just stubbed right here at the end of the townhomes. So with this development, the full access and realization of the original rezoning request will come into play right here, so Bozeman Trail will make its way all the way out to this location on Pepper's Ferry. As we talked with the planning commission and talked with town staff, there were some questions that had been brought up as far as traffic flow, differences between what some VDOT requirements are now that they weren't in 2001 when the original zoning was done for New River Village, but some of the VDOT requirements that exist today from an entrance spacing standpoint, intersection spacing standpoint, we did some follow-up measurements and adjusted the location. Originally, we had the location of the road hugging more along this property line right here. We did make some adjustments, pushed that forward towards these units. That did knock out a few of the units that we originally had planned. We had a few more units in some of these buildings showed, but it shrunk our frontage a little bit. We also provided at that time, could you go to the next one, please? A follow-up, and I apologize, this is a little hard to see, and we switched orientation on you. Pepper's Ferry Road down is right here, New Village Drive. Some of the concerns that we were asked to address were making sure that turning movements from Walnut across the street here, left turning movements out of Walnut and left turning movements out of Bozeman could be made safely. And what we have shown here are, if you zoom in really, really close, you can see a little image of a car. So we used our transportation modeling software to bring a car out and make those turning movements into the inside lanes of both those east and west directions on Pepper's Ferry to show those vehicles can make a safe turn. The issues we were up against is VDOT, and the town wanted us to try to look at holding spacing standards between Walters Drive and Bozeman and New Village Drive and Bozeman. So we are meeting those entrance standards. There's a certain distance those need to be apart, but there's also standards across, and we've got intersections that are across the street from one another. So this is where we ask the town engineering department to take a look at this intersection, show the diagrams to be sure we could make safe movements. Otherwise, we would have been in a situation where Walnut would have had to go to a right in, right out. You would not have been able to make a left-hand turn lane, a left-hand movement onto Walnut, which would have further added traffic to the intersection of New Village Drive and Dudley, which, as you all know, that have been on council for a while, that's one thing that the residents of New River Village have always been aware of, is additional traffic coming on New Village Drive at that intersection. The traffic counts and the traffic data we provide within our zoning application and to the town engineering department anticipate most of our traffic that would be using, that would be living in our project would be using Bozeman as opposed to New Village Drive. We have three, if you would, I'll go back a little more in here. We have three access points off of Bozeman Drive into our development, one right here, a second one right here, and a third one in this location. Obviously, we have the exit and the connection to Bozeman Trail. We also have a fourth access point on New Village Drive at this location right there. So you see the residential buildings we have here, larger ones, the 14 townhomes. We have open space, store morgue management, dumpster facilities. We also have a clubhouse, a pool, an exercise facility that's planned in this location right here. They would have an onsite, full-time management location or personnel in that office right there that would be able to handle any concerns from the residents. As we extend Bozeman, one of the, I guess there were two final items as we worked through planning commission and staff that were brought up. As you can see, the darker lines you see here are all the proposed sidewalks we have within the development. So again, this is a very pedestrian, very walkable community itself. We do have existing sidewalk along Pepper's Ferry that was put in for the road lining project, as well as bike lanes. One thing that we have added, and we discussed this with planning commission and included that as a commitment, that we would go ahead and extend sidewalk along New Village Drive in this location right here. And the other item that was brought up by staff and engineering was there is a piece of property just off screen here that is, that there were some concerns about as far as whether there, if there was a future commercial access point that would want to come on to Pepper's Ferry at that location. So one thing the staff and planning recommended was if we could provide a 50-foot right-of-way to the side of that property, so if that property does ever develop, it would be an opportunity for them to tie into that public road and not be in a position similar to what we were trying to figure out as far as how we could get another commercial access onto Pepper's Ferry Road in that location based on the VDOT, the town spacing standards. So those were some changes we made right there before planning commission, and just wanted to bring those to council's attention. I'm happy to answer any questions now, or you can wait after Brian. I'm going to fill it to Brian for just a few minutes, let him go over the units themselves.
I have one question for you. It's a technical question. I really started to give this application my full attention the last couple days. I'm okay with a lot of aspects of it, but the traffic does concern me, and I'm not sure that you made a correct statement. I'm going to ask you again.
Okay.
The left turn movement out of Bozeman Trail, if those intersections are full access intersections, then the spacing should be at least 660 feet. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. Our understanding from staff and from going through, because we had a conversation with Paul Brown at VDOT about this as well, early on in the process, and I'll try to find, what's his name?
This question is less than two hours old. So I haven't, I'm not trying to spring it on anybody. It's just a question I want answered this evening, because I do have, I don't have a problem with, or I have a lot of support for the application, but I am concerned that once we get to get the traffic right in here, and I do not like that it's not lined up with Walnut and the auto turn you're showing there, that's a perfect world, and I don't want to introduce any, I'm just getting that out there and open, but go ahead.
So a couple items to that, and I'm glad, Mr. Stipes, you brought that up. So the revised, the revision letter we submitted to the town on September 10th that took care of some of these items after we had our first round of review by staff. So Bozeman Trail, number three in that, and this should be in your packet.
I read it.
Bozeman Trail intersection needs to be, needs to meet the VDOT access management guidelines of 470 feet between intersections. So that has been shifted from Walters to Bozeman is, meets that standard as well as from Bozeman to New Village. The other piece of it was a 200-foot offset that the recommendation from VDOT, the town, was that from Walnut to Bozeman, there should be a 200-foot separation of those. The issue is, you know, from a, because we talked about it in our staff meeting, was whether you do line up Walnut and another road. Now, certainly, we can't line up Walnut with Bozeman, because it would be, it would be cut across the 80 property right here as well. So if we set it up into a four-way intersection, discussions with staff was, the preference was to push it further away, so we weren't having that situation that we've had some concerns mentioned, you know, about some of these heavier-traveled intersections as far as who's making that left turn without a control stop or a signal or some sort of a scenario like that. So as we looked at it with staff and what we presented back, this was the best, this was the ideal location to take Bozeman out. It was more important from our standpoint and from looking at it and dealing with staff to make sure we got that connection and that separation of the 470 that it was for this piece of it right here, as with the determining factors of why we have the road where we are right now.
I wouldn't call it an ideal. I call it the least worse, is what I call it, the least worse location. So you are saying that Paul Brown said that 470 feet between two full access intersections is acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. And if that's okay, then that's my, that's my single holdup on this, and I'm going to look into that.
So otherwise, obviously, if we didn't have that, if it was 600 or whatever you call that, Mr. Stipes, we wouldn't be able to have access anywhere along that section.
You could if it was not full access. And what I'm talking about is right in and right out.
Okay.
But that's, I'm just getting my reservation out there.
Sure.
And with that clarification, and if that checks out, then that's my reservation.
Ken, to follow up on his comments there, when you have this completed, we're talking about approximately 300 cars in this new residential area?
If you look at page nine of the application, Mr. Hubbard, so when we generate traffic, you know, for each use, whether it's an apartment or a single family or a townhouse or an office building, they have certain traffic that's generated by those based on different factors, whether it's number of units, number of people, square footage. So when you look at those numbers on there, if you look at a weekday based on the number of 14 townhomes and 132 apartments, that works out to a weekday average daily trip of 820 trips per day. Now, for everybody's benefit, this was something that we brought up before our last meeting that I was not aware of, because there were some questions about Pepper's Ferry Road, the capacity of Pepper's Ferry Road. Right now, Pepper's Ferry is running, I believe, at about 16,000, 18,000 trips a day going up and down that road. And based on the VDOT design and the way that road is constructed, it can handle a capacity of 36,000.
Wow.
That's the data we received.
I have no problems with capacity, and your numbers check out with trip generations. I'll check those out. So if that helps satisfy, yeah. That's the only question I have with your traffic report is that intersection, but the traffic looks good.
I mean, I was just a little bit concerned there. Let's say at 8 o'clock in the morning, 8:30, whenever people go to work, if we don't have any lights there, it looks to be like we had some, you know, are people going to be able to get out in a fairly reasonable attitude?
And we believe so, based on the numbers we wrote. Yes, sir.
And I wanted to tell you this, too, Steve. I appreciate both you and Brian taking me around last week and showing me this and the other thing that we're going to be talking about in a few minutes, and I appreciate you guys spending time with that.
Before Brian gets started, one thing I wanted to mention, we did talk to several many business owners, local business owners, and we, at the end of this presentation, they have a short, short video. We didn't want to ask them to be here. As you know, there are lots of folks that could be asked to be here, but I think you'll probably know who they are, or just it gives a different perspective, and I wouldn't, I forgot to mention that earlier, so.
Good evening, council. My name is Brian McHale. My address is 2524 Whitewood Avenue in Roanoke, Virginia. So I'm just going to talk about the project at a higher level than Steve got into, and then also describe the product that we'd like to build here, just to give you some color on what that is. Before I get to that, just briefly about our experience in Christiansburg, which we're proud of and which we're proud of and appreciate the opportunity to be here. We've completed several commercial projects, Regent Plaza, which is off Franklin Street, Phillips Square, which is just down the road from this proposed project, and the Good Samaritan Hospital location over by Kensington. And we've worked in several neighborhoods, many of which we, we designed and built. We've completed over 450 homes in Christiansburg, and we have about two, a pipeline of about 200 more in the works. So hopefully, this, this housing and commercial space has helped the tax base here and, you know, it's certainly been a good opportunity for our staff and subcontractors to, to work, so thank Christiansburg for that. So a few, you know, key points that I'd ask you to consider for this proposal. As Steve and Robert have both mentioned, we believe this proposal is very complimentary, compatible with the conference plan. It provides excellent access to current and future local business. There's no secret that the Pepper's Ferry corridor has had a lot of investment, both from the town and from outside businesses, and I think this is well positioned to, to complement that. We also, you know, we do market studies anytime we enter into a new area for housing, and there's clear, it's clear to us there's an unmet needed Christiansburg for housing, particularly the housing, upscale housing that we want to provide. And then, you know, obviously, the tax revenue would be tremendous from this, both from the retail spending, hopefully, local employment, and then the property itself. As Steve went into, the VDOT calculation showed that Pepper's Ferry is fully capable of handling this, plenty of capacity there. And we hope that the sidewalks that we've introduced onto Bozeman and New Village and within the community will provide the connectivity that the town's seeking to connect, you know, particularly the Huckleberry Trail system and provide walkable access to retail. So I won't go through this other end just to remind us, you know, 146 living units, majority of those are apartment homes. There are five 18 unit buildings and then a 24 unit building. So this is a rendering of what the outside of the project will look like. This is actually based off of a, a project we delivered in North Carolina County a couple of years ago. But what I want to point out here is it's got a colonial style to it. You can see the roof lines, architectural shingles. We will have a great deal of masonry finish on this. It might not be this exact color of brick, but the ratio of brick deciding is something you can expect to see. Spacious balconies that provide outdoor space for the residents, site lighting. About the interior finishes, so these, we've built these as buildings with luxury apartments, but they are a reasonable price. So what we mean by luxury is these are nine-foot ceilings, you know, the standard for many builders is eight foot, and that extra foot makes a world of difference in terms of visibility. We put luxury plank flooring in all of our living areas. That's very durable, looks just like wood, feels like wood. Granite countertops in every single unit, stainless steel appliances. So, you know, this is designed to attract, you know, young professional, you know, investor, even maybe a big young family starting off. These are some more interior shots. What I'll point out here is just a nice open kitchen into living area space, the balconies right off the other side. It's a great place to entertain. This is a two-bedroom unit, so typical bedroom, you put carpet in the, in the bedroom, that's typically what the market asks for. Clubhouse and pool, you know, and as Steve mentioned, one thing we're really excited about before we begin to support here is this sized project will allow us to have daily presence in Christiansburg for rental, you know, we already have. We'll have a clubhouse and we can staff provide, you know, services to people, not only in this particular community, but surrounding projects we have. And that clubhouse will have a fitness center in it with a 24-foot car access. There's also a nice open space for entertaining. It's got a TV in it, a pool kitchen, bathroom, so the residents can have parties and things of that nature there.
Ryan, I recall that when you and Steve took me around, that you said that there would be, maybe a full-time person there to assist in if any apartment or anybody had some of their problems, and they wouldn't have to go Richmond or something like that, that somebody would be right there. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, without the project of this size, it's hard for us to do that in Christiansburg at the moment. You know, this, this project gives us the size we need to have a person here. Yep.
Councilman Hubbard, we've lost sound. Will you check to see if it's below you, there's a switch? You may have switched it.
Is it on?
It's on, thank you.
So this is the, the video that Robert mentioned. She was. He's Mayor Hubbard, receiving.
I'm co-principal of Johnson Kern Aperture and a native of New River Village, having graduated from Blackford High School. We have an office on Pepper's Ferry Road in Christiansburg. I wanted to do my support to the Magnolia Point project, proposed by Robert Frayland. I think it's in line with what the town of Christiansburg is trying to do for the future, especially with the expansion of Pepper's Ferry Road. I think it's great for the area and local businesses. It's always good to have, you know, housing in the area to build infrastructure in the surrounding area. Thank you very much. And I'll be right back.
Hi, I'm Dobie Smith, owner of Inside Out Salon, located in the Village Square Shopping Center on Pepper's Ferry Road, and then a tenant of Robert Frayland since 2006. And we're really happy to see all the developments that's happened on the road and with the businesses and, and things in the area that are helping our business to grow and helping us in the community. So I think the idea of well-thought-out housing is a great idea for bringing in more families, more professionals, more people to our area that will love it as much as we do.
Hey, guys, this is John Kern with Ball of Bones down in Christiansburg. I wanted to come to the meeting on Tuesday, and unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to make it, so I wanted to at least shoot the video just to express my thoughts on these reservations, specifically on Magnolia Point. Quick side note, you know, there's free restaurants and free beverages, including the Land of the West. I can't say on a Wednesday about Robert Frayland and how the union is a part of the community, just to make sure we give this project a public, a, a, an initiation, including the lease, and then handling whatever needs to happen with how, how, with the couple of these, the three of them. Those guys have been over backwards, and I can't, I could go on and on, especially from the state, just to help to make sure that they manage the area and Christiansburg through. And, and, you know, possibly, I think that I'd be a good utilization for, you know, better by the fair. So, that being said, the demographic from Magnolia Point is known as, it's part of these, one of the shows I location, and I have a lot of things. I love the rest of the council, and some families that have since 2000, coached kids' soccer for 10 years, we're nursing, the heart's going there behind us. I'm, I'm, I'm still a pro, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be the first one. I love the fact that there is, there is, there is, there is, that, you know, the same pressure from, so, that's it. Just want to shoot a quick, a, 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 a,
you know, in addition to the hundred and sixty-seven homes that are already there and the thirty units that were already put in there about a couple of years ago. Because we're going to get up from water pressure and supply to take care of all this. Because originally, when New River Village was built, some of the higher elevation homes did not have enough pressure, so it bothered them to suspect that maybe the water supply is a little bit borderline. And then when these thirty units were built here a couple of years ago, some of the neighbors in the neighborhood thought their pressure dropped a little bit. So, I'm just wondering if the city reviewed the water supply situation and will take care of the needs.
So, we provided within our zoning application an estimate of water and sewer flows that will come out of the bucket based on how department standards. Those have been submitted as part of the application and some were reviewed by the town. We haven't heard anything from the engineering department stating that there was going to be any water pressure or sewer capacity issues. That's all I can speak to, so we did provide the information.
The only other concern I had was when the neighborhood was originally built, Area Two allowed a density of about seven units per acre, and that was built. And now this new area is going to allow theoretically about eighteen units per acre. And I was just wondering how that was arrived at, that who made that decision to almost triple the density of apartments going into an area. It looks like it's going to be a fine establishment there, no problem with the way it looks or so forth, but I was just wondering how that was arrived at.
I think I could answer that because I developed New River Village. Again, this scrub, Brian Limpin's scrub, met tonight at the Academy. We purposely increased density as we went forward. In the original proposal, New River Village, we had something similar planned. And at the time, the, we didn't feel like the demand for Christiansburg was ready for that type of project. And so, we just didn't rezone it with the original land. Obviously, the town's grown tremendously and the commercial area has boomed, and it's a totally different situation now than was planned then. And to be clear, I wouldn't have built this then. There's no way I would have done that. But again, as Brian alluded, Mr. Pass, who actually lives in Northern Virginia, did this market study, and he's never been wrong. And we've done a lot of them with him. And hats off to the economic development of Town Council and the Economic Development Authority here because it's really, there is demand now. And there wasn't in two thousand and one, I think. So, I would like to answer your question.
And you're going to achieve that with what, three, four, or five story building?
Three stories.
Three story building.
Yes, sir.
Well, the rest of my concerns have already been addressed by the presentations so far, so I don't know any more comments.
Sir, on their request here, I'm going to read out another section, and it talks about the density. And maybe they will get more into that if there are more questions to get into. Let me bring that out now, and then we'll give these other questions, sir. This is a public hearing, Scripture number C, conditional use permit requested by Magnolia Point Community LLC, the property owned by International Church of the Fourth Square Gospel, for a planned housing development to consist of multifamily dwellings and townhomes at a density of development of approximately seventeen units per acre or properly located northeast of the intersection of Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest and Phillips Drive Northwest in the R-three multifamily residential district. So, if you want to attack the density thing again to help them out in the...
Are we close of a hearing, please?
Mayor, are you still having public hearing on the first?
Yes.
Yeah, I maybe jumped ahead on that. I thought, I asked if there's any questions on A. We had a hand back there, Mr. Waddell. Yes. Just considering on A.
Yes, sir.
Please ask me that, please stand and announce your name.
My name is Larry Waddell. I live at one oh five Sage Lane in New River Village. Mr. B, Town Council members? Thank you. My main concern about this rezoning request would have to do with traffic congestion. Part of that concern maybe has been alleviated by Mr. Simonis' facts there. I'm still not completely assured by that. We have one hundred and eighty-nine homes in New River Village at this time, thirty-one townhomes, which amounts to a total of two hundred and twenty residences. Each one of these homes has at least two cars that attempt to travel from New Village Drive onto Pepper's Ferry Road. And some of the homes at this time have three and four vehicles trying to make that progress. I think we can be assured even with Mr. Simonis' presentation that we will still have more vehicles trying to come from the new development onto New River Village Drive, New Village Drive, and making an attempt to get onto Pepper's Ferry Road. That is my primary concern. You can probably multiply two cars times each home that is in there. And I can speak from experience and tell you that many times when we attempt to get from New Village Drive onto Pepper's Ferry Road, sometimes I see five or six cars lined up there waiting to get onto Pepper's Ferry Road. So, how many cars will come from the new development and not go onto Bozeman? And aside from that, with the two streets being so close together, is that going to create another traffic jam just from cars trying to get out and God want to know? That is my primary concern.
Mr. Franklin? I'd like to make sure that I understand your concern. I think that a lot of folks in New River Village will rightfully use both the trade in addition to New Village to provide an extra relief and also provide more safety and access. And so, you know, I'm not undermining what you're saying whatsoever. There will be more traffic, but there is also another access that's a safety welfare thing. And then I actually believe it may relieve some tension from New River Village. So, anyway, I wanted to just address that.
Are there any comments? Yes, please.
I'm Bill Aiden. I live in Blacksburg and have the adjacent property right next to this development. Steve, could you put the site plan back up there just a minute? Let me preface this by saying I'm very much in favor of the rezoning. I would like to have a little more explanation on the interest into our property. Is that going to be a curb cut? What's going to be there?
At this point, Mr. Aiden, it's just right away. I mean, we can certainly discuss that as we move forward. Everything, we haven't even talked about what kind of curb we got and then put in there, whether it's going to be road face or if it's going to be, you know, a six inch CG six curb. But certainly, we're going to return and pave a little apron and certainly do.
And what about the distance from Pepper's Ferry?
That distance from, that's why we got it lined up here. We didn't want to push it any further into Pepper's Ferry. Obviously, it would depend on whether it's a, you know, commercial access or another road. But from what we looked at, what we talked about, we're considering that what can be a commercial access. And so, we're just leaving a fifty foot ride and we'll be sure that...
We would like to have a curb cut and a little aid from you, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, please.
Hi, my name's Tricia Porter Chapman. I live behind where Mr. Aiden has property. My property is right beside the development. I'm in support of it. I've lived down on one fourteen my entire life as far as traffic issues. If you know how to drive, just drive. I mean, just the traffic out there is no worse than any other road in the government of Christiansburg. We come from Bradford every day, and every day we have to put chicken with the people across the road in the first entrance to Delmark Farms to turn left. They start in the middle lane at Shoals and drive us all the way down. And we have, many times, had to go down the road, turn around, and come back so we can get in our driveway. As far as the additional housing, I'm all for that. That's what it was originally intended for. I think the plan is great. Mr. Franklin's doing it at a really great time and not trying to push it through the first time we ever done. Me and my family, my mom is in support of it, and we think that this could be great for the economy. And I really feel that no one should have a say in what anyone else should do with their property.
Any other comments? Like you said, I appreciate the comments that you had. And at this time, then I'm going to close the part on Magnolia Point Community. Let's sort of end the topic, and I'm going to move on. Thank you. I'm going to go now to section third FD. And this is on rezoning by Estates and Homes. No, I did see. I never closed C. Yeah, I read C and I talked about the seventeen years. But I can go over that again.
So, V on the agenda was the actual rezoning request from agricultural to the R-three zoning district. And we spoke to these two requests kind of as one overall project. One kind of depends on the other. So, with the application we had in place, we had a zoning request to R-three and then a conditional use permit from within that R-three zoning to allow for planned housing development. The question was brought up earlier about density in the town's zoning ordinance under the R-three zoning district in section forty-two dash one sixty-four for planned housing developments, which is what we're asking for. The overall dwelling unit density shall not exceed twenty units per acre. So, that's kind of the top threshold. Our original application was around seventeen units per acre. Once we shifted Bozeman and lost a few units, so we're actually around at fifteen units per acre threshold right now. So, we are underneath that high limit of the twenty units per acre that's allowed within the planned housing development. Everything else about the project we spoke to during the first public hearing, but we're obviously here to answer any other questions concerning that, about this conditional use permit specific.
All right, with that, I'm going to move on to paragraph P. And this is a rezoning request by Estates and Homes for property owned by the Haverstad Family Limited Partnership. Yes, or what? I think the important question is always...
Does anyone have any public comment on this condition? Being none, who want to close on two?
And that is a conditional by the Estates and Homes, property owned by the Haverstad Family Limited Partnership, resource association for a planned commercial development, including commercial and residential use, and a density of the development of approximately eighteen units per square, per acre or properly located on four ninety-five Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest, adjacent to Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest, Quinn W. Stewart Boulevard Northwest, and Stafford Drive Northwest in a B-three general business district. And do we have anybody to speak for this?
I'll go ahead, sir. So, and Mr. Mayor, we're certainly, we'll come back at the next one. We have a very similar situation on this project where we have a rezoning request and we also have a conditional use permit attached to it. So, I guess that would be V on your agenda. We're going to speak to these as one project that we're happy to get back on as you may say, and close to answer any questions the council may have. This project, the second project we're speaking about tonight, is one that we've been working on with Estates and Homes for almost ten years now. As council knows, several years ago, Estates and Homes, we were lucky enough to work with them on that and come in and asked for a rezoning request on the properties back behind the villas at Pepper's Ferry. So, to orient everybody again, Pepper's Ferry Road here on the low side of the page, Penney Stewart Boulevard as you come in, the traffic signal right here, Regal Settlements, the mall, Panda Express. This section right here is the Villas of Pepper's Ferry. The property that was rezoned a few years ago, what is called Clifton, which is a single-family subdivision, and the Adams of Pepper's Ferry, which is a multifamily apartment home. Project is right here. As you all, everybody's here in town, everybody drives by to see if the apartment complex has been finished. There are people in, everything that we've heard so far is top-notch, A-plus. Estates and Homes is currently working on the townhome portion of there. Clifton Development as well, some of their single-family tenants, and some of the construction work is still going on in some of those back faces. Actually, I believe phase two of that flat is on your agenda for letting us see. What we're looking at tonight is the twenty-eight point six acres that says right here in the front. Village Square Shopping Center is right here. The two small water ponds, as you walk, as you drive in, Quinn Stewart on either side of the road are right here. So, the twenty acres sitting here in the middle. This property is currently Zoning B-one. And again, like all the rezones we bring forward, Town Council, the planning commission, we spend a lot of time looking at comprehensive plan and how these developments will fit into the fabric of what Christiansburg wants to see as some of its very core laws. So, the B-one zoning is a business use zoning. The rezoning we're asking for tonight is to take it to a B-three zoning district with a conditional use permit to allow for a planned commercial development. So, as you all are aware, six, eight months ago, Planning Commission Council passed a section of the ordinance to allow planned commercial development. The first one we brought before you a few months ago is some of the amendments to the marketplace redevelopment that's happening. That's a similar rezoning request or conditional use permit request, but it's similar in name, not similar in what we're doing here. So, there's a lot of excitement around this project that we have on our team. This is a product, a project that hasn't been seen in the New River Valley, hasn't been seen in our neighbors over in Blacksburg. And again, I can say excited over and over and over again because it is, it's a really big project. So, what you see here, the planned commercial district allows a lot of the same flexibility that you have in planned housing districts. You kind of set some of your own rules. There are density requirements, other requirements the town put in place when they set that zoning district or that conditional use permit allowance. The purpose of it is to provide a project that's new, that's fresh, it's got some ingenuity to it. So, we really think we've done that with this project. I'm going to walk the council through this. You can stop me at any point if you have any questions. But what we've got here is a true mixed-use development. So, when I say mixed-use, it's commercial, and it's office, it's retail, it's restaurant, it's housing. And some of that housing is over-retail, so a true vertical mixed-use, where you have commercial on the ground floor, you have residential units above, as well as some standalone residential product as well. So, as we have several entrances off of the property, into the property. We've got one at Pepper's Ferry Road in this location. We've got one off of Quinn W. Stewart in this location. We've got one that comes directly across from John Allen's Drive, which is the road that went into Clifton subdivision, and one right here in this location off of Stafford. As we talked to staff about this very early on, one of the critical things for a project of this scale is there's a time lapse. So, we see, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have introduced our team. So, Todd Robinson, Estates and Homes, and Thomas Hittoto, Estates are here as well and will provide a lot of insight and background and vision to the project. But as we look at this as a five to eight to ten-year project, the flexibility that's allowed for planned commercial development is critical to the success of a project like this. You can't build all of this in a six-month or a one-year period. Markets are going to change, finance is going to change, demand for housing is going to change. So, what we've tried to allow within our application is some of that flexibility that as uses and demand changes, we can kind of roll with that and still keep in some of the critical areas, what we call the primary design features of this application that really make it what it is. And we've included a lot of text within our application itself, but I didn't want to touch on these because as we met with staff early on in the process and talked through what this project was going to be, one of the critical points was saying flexibility is one thing, but there has to be some dedication and some commitment to what, as I said, we're calling a primary design feature. So, what sets this project apart from others? So, I'm going to read through those real quick. They're bullet pointed on page ten of your application. But a main street or a boulevard entry into the project that can have parallel parking on both sides or on either side with a central island, you know, wide enough for some intimate settings, you know, pop-up tents, little markets. So, that main boulevard drive would be off of Quinn Stewart and enter into the project. So, this would be kind of a one-way that you come through and can look back around. At the five intersection, focal point at the center of the mixed-use area. See this, that little focal point right there? And again, I'm going to pull up a color, actually, Mayor, have you got any color? I'll make this way. Keep on going now. So, hopefully, that's a little bit easier for everybody to see. So, again, the main boulevard road as you come into the project, the center core, the focus area. At the five, outdoor community event area, that's that light brown color you see right here. So, again, Todd can speak to some of the vision, but that could be outdoor events, whether it's a small band, a community theater, an art show, a place where people, you know, can get out and have some outdoor experiences. A walkable community with sidewalks and trails connecting internal uses to one another and to our neighbors. As council knows, the Humpberry Trail is just off the edge of our page here with the sidewalk improvements that were done with Pepper's Ferry expansion. We have sidewalks, trail systems throughout the project itself. This is extremely walkable. One of the biggest things that we were challenged with on the design of this project is trying to figure out how to get cars out of it. Not physically get somebody driving out of the project, but to try to limit the impact of vehicles to the project itself. As you see, most of our parking lots are back behind building facades, so we wanted to try to screen, hide a lot of that parking. So, the walkability and the bikeability is critical to what we see as the success of the project. You can also see a little white line right here, which is the trail system we were proposing that connects right here to the intersection at the Villas of Pepper's Ferry. That's one of the things, as I said in my text here, we want to bring our neighbors from the villas, from Clifton, from the Adams into this project to help patronize those businesses, shop in those stores, eat at those restaurants. A high-quality architectural style, but while defining the look of Clifton Town Center is respectful and compatible with our multifamily neighbors. Townhomes developed along the north side of the property to provide appropriate respect for transition to the villas and the Adams of Pepper's Ferry. So, those are their townhome products right here. So, again, buffering any higher impact commercial from those residential units. Standalone apartments could occur in this section right here. So, again, this is an apartment, a type of apartment building we don't have in Christiansburg. It's not your standard. You know, two, three, four walked up, this would be more of an urban-style apartment building or condo building that would have elevator access and more than twelve or eighteen or twenty-four units per building. And then four access points into the property that we talked about earlier. We also talked about some of the flexibility we'd like to see if we're asking for in the application. For example, we've got office buildings showing across the front. Todd has had multiple conversations with folks over the last few months, different business owners that would love to see this project happen and bring their business to Christiansburg. You know, some of these offices may go to a two-story lot. We've got a potential hotel site showing right here, which we think would be an excellent use right there for the standpoint of having a park right across the street. And obviously, with the commercial components we have here, there could be a signature office user, maybe a tenant that's currently at the Corporate Research Center that wants to expand and build their signature office building. That could be another flexible use that happens right here instead of a hotel. Outdoor spaces serving the commercial areas may morph, I think is the word I used up here, may morph over time. So, maybe you've got an outdoor seating area for a restaurant, and that restaurant changes and they do something different. So, again, not purposely programming every square foot of the property to give them the users and the tenants the flexibility to make it work with what their business model shows.
Steve, do you have adequate parking, you feel?
So, parking's going to be the biggest driver of this entire project. So, the, I say that, I say that with a caveat. So, we know based on town standards what the parking ratio is we have to meet. The planned commercial district, which is what we're asking for, does allow a twenty percent production and your vehicle trips, you know, the vehicle and the number of parking spaces that are required per townhead. So, if we're required to provide a hundred spaces for a certain use, we can knock those down to eighty with the etc. within that planned commercial development. So, every use that you see on this project, certainly from our conceptual planning, parking, the townhomes, those would be self-parked either in garages or within the elements itself. Several open parking lots, large parking lots here. If there is a hotel user, that hotel user has got to let it park its own. Folks that don't like to share parking a lot with other uses. So, we know that as we develop the site plans, if this is approved and we develop site plans as we go, what we're looking at parking ratios as we go is low. We know we can't build over what our parking ratio would allow. So, right now, we've got a residential ratio of about seventy-five percent. As mentioned, I believe, in the advertisement for the project, you know, the density is about eighteen units per acre. I believe in PCD, is it thirty? Thirty units per acre is the maximum density in the planned commercial development, we're at eighteen. So, we talked about parking flexibility. We've got fifteen percent open space showing on the property right now. That was the other color drawn that we have. Now, there's certainly other areas of open space that aren't shown in that as one of the colors. Now, there's certainly other areas of open space that aren't shown in that as as one of the colors, a blue or a green, whether we consider it active recreation or just passive open space. There'll be pockets and pieces throughout the development that will allow folks to get outside and and have some outdoor space, take the dog out, that type of stuff. Some of the some of the same items that we spoke about with the marketplace as far as looking at this project as one overall master plan and not focusing in on when we do a site plan, let's say, for making an office building right here. But the parking ratios, the open space that are proposed all within the overall master plan development itself and not specific to one individual use. So we do spell that out in our application text as well.
And you said this was gonna be, I'd say, multiple years to to do?
Yes, sir.
How many years, multiple years was up again?
I think we've got in the application, it's a five to eight-year build-out. We also have three proppers that, and we didn't touch on proppers on the last application, but we do it here on on this one, I wanted to bring those up. As we talked about with the last application, traffic on one fourteen is 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 just an an issue we all have to think about and and deal with on projects like this. I know this that was one of the big focuses when we were working on the rezoning of Clifton and the Addams. Part of what came out of that is is that the traffic that we got out there at one fourteen that that our applicant tonight was was a part of, was partnering that with the town to get that to get that done. So what we've done, the town currently has, we've got three proppers called out, Nelson Rico, Lopley. It'll be developed in success in general conformance with the application master plan dated August the twentieth. A traffic impact analysis we performed and provided to the town of Christiansburg Christiansburg for approval prior to the issuance of a site plan approval. But the first phase of the development, the step of the analysis to be determined by town Christiansburg staff. Construction traffic shall be prohibited from entering the site from staff or drive. Any traffic or road improvements that are warranted, further results of the traffic impact analysis that are directly attributable to the Clifton Town Center project will be provided and constructed at the developer's cost. So that's a lot of words to say, what we're proffering is that at each time we come into a site plan, the first site plan that we get popular, or if this is approved, we'll have a full-blown traffic impact analysis, traffic study that's done based on the requirements the town of Christiansburg would like to see us look at. The second part of that, or the third proffer, was saying that anything that goes in there, whether we have to put turn lanes in or sidewalks or bike lanes will be will be a cause borne by the developer, not not by the town. The reason that's important, and we had a really good conversation and explanation with planning permission during our our work with them, is that we don't have every single use planned on this property. That's that was kind of part of my first part of my presentation tonight, is the flexibility. We don't know one hundred percent that a hundred and five-room hotel's gonna go on the corner, or that we're gonna have thirty-five thousand square feet of office space. What we do know, though, is that the traffic signal that's that's at the corner of Point Stillard and Pepper's Ferry. We know the town is currently underway and has been working on traffic studies and intersection studies on that specific intersection in regards to the park project, you know, paged out, which lines up with Point Stillard. And what we wanted to do was we wanted to provide a guarantee to the town that us from the development side of things are committed to doing the traffic impact studies and all the improvements that would be necessary at the time of site plan approval. What we did want to get into was trying to 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 guess magic numbers at the rezon standpoint. And even proposed traffic improvements that may not be necessary, may be too far, may not be enough. And we're stuck in a situation where we've got a proper plan that either does need something or does need something that was proposed. So I believe staff felt, and I want to speak for staff, I feel staff, since we're partners, fully armed tonight, felt confident with that, those proppers, that they protect the town's best interest, they protect the community, they protected us as the applicant and developers as well, because at the end of the day, we're all working on this together. And planning permission's all fit as well to approve the project with a six oh five. I'm gonna be quiet for a few minutes and let Todd talk through a couple of his his notes on this and have the answer in question.
Thank you. Todd Robertson, three forty-seven Clover Hollow Road in Ecor, Virginia. I've been here, I've seen you guys several times over the last couple of years. And I want to talk a little bit about some of the, I think, the vision and how this got started. Approximately, I'm gonna say about a year ago, we first started having some conversations with the owner of the property here. And it had been under contract for some time because it is only today for it would be acceptable for a big box store, for example. And as we, as that fell through, we immediately reached out to the seller and and at the same time talked to the folks that we've gotten to know well here at the Villas of Pepper's Ferry, which is the most adjacent property here. And we we met with them, at first the board, and we said, hey, this is something we're thinking about doing. And we sort of immediately, you know, we seemed to be a lot of support for that because it was a worry at that point in time of bags, plastic bags going across parking lots, grocery carts in the pond and so forth. And and so it seemed to have a lot of appeal. And so I I, in the next month or so, we we worked out some arrangements with the seller, I reached out to Steve, and we said, hey, we want to create this town center-type draw, right? That has, we have a workforce that comes to work there, we have folks that live there, we have people that shop there and walk that that come to visit in a hotel. And it would be a vibrant-type downtown look to it. There's not many places in in Christiansburg today that we have a twenty-eight and a half acre parcel where we can really make that vision come to life. And so if you started to look at what we had done previously, we did do the rezoning for the Addams and Pepper's Faries. We didn't build that, but we did work with Denstock Development to help, you know, we we think we carefully chose a partner that we thought could pull that off with the right look and the right type of amenities to be attractive to both empty nesters, to young professionals. And it's been very successful so far. In the back, our Clifton community is is townhomes, it's villas and single-family homes. And the reason we did that is that we really had product that fit a broad spectrum of buyers, right? So our buyers in the townhomes, those started in in the two forty range. And our villas are more, it's a first-floor master bedroom with some living upstairs as well, but more designed for empty nesters. And then we have forty-two single-family, more estate lots in the back that we just opened up about sixty days ago. We have been wildly successful just in the short period that we've been open. There's there's certainly plenty of demand right now, and it's, what we're seeing is that there is no housing of this quality in that price range as close to the work center, the employment centers that than what we have here in Christiansburg. So as we sat down with the Villas of Pepper's Ferry and we said, okay, this is the vision, you know, we're gonna have a coffee shop, we're gonna have maybe a wine bar, there'll be some restaurants with with what is also gonna be some living residential or office space above. And again, to support, we ended up having a neighborhood meeting, we had about sixty-five people attend. And this, at this point, it was still a vision, we wanted to get feedback. And there were some things that we talked about, some things that we may change this to very early on in the process. As Steve touched on, and and it seemed to be very appealing. This walkway here, for example, was was a necessity, they, to have a space where they can have coffee with friends or go have a glass of wine with friends, just became very, very appealing. So as Steve said, you know, the vision here is that we want a Main Street. We want to have space that, as the market demands, we seem to have a lot of interest and it's very premature. Obviously, we have to pass this step before we get serious talking to people, but we've been involved with the Virginia Department, I'm sorry, Virginia Economic Development Authority, for example, who has has been working with Onward and RV. There's grant money out there for technology companies to locate here in the New River Valley along with Charlottesville and Harrisonburg, the three locations that they've identified. This is one of two places in the New River Valley that is on their radar, primarily due to the connectivity of this area. It's very supportive. It has multiple bus systems that run in and around the area of the mall. And we feel like we can tap into that to make it very accessible and and get people to and from work as well. So they they really like that location and the proximity to both Virginia Tech and also Radford University as well. The vision is to drive down Main Street, and as Steve said, we have a center island here that we have something like, you know, it would certainly be landscaped, maybe even a clock or something of that nature, but it's gonna be something that's gonna be a focal point of the community. We want to create space that that's going to, as you drive down it, it's gonna look like kind of Mayberry USA. We want it to have that small-town lights look to it. At the end of it, as we, as the proffer, the contractor did for the Addams and Pepper's Ferry, we have a like an infinity pool here that will actually create a waterfall at the end of Main Street. So we're trying to tie everything together. We've had numerous conversations with various CEOs of especially the technology companies in Blacksburg area, from Torpor Robotics to Nineteen Oh One Group, Block One. And they're all extremely concerned about the housing needs that we have in our area. And so we we certainly want to appeal to that. I think we've already had three Block One employees, for example, purchase homes from us in Clifton in both the townhomes and the single-family section there. And we hope that not only are we gonna attract their employees, because if we can have those employees living within walking distance, that's gonna be very appealing to them to, you know, hopefully creates some office space here in the area as well. The hotel was an interesting conversation that I've had with multiple companies. And as they are recruiting today, they don't have a place where they could have a hotel, have office space, and have entertainment all within that walking corridor, right? So they bring in a recruit from Minnesota. They walk across the street, they go to the office space, they have the interview, and at the end of the day, they can all go and share a meal or whatever it might be, have finished up that evening in the recruiting process. So that's the kind of environment that we want to create and also the the entertainment-type venue, not large entertainment by no means, but it's activity. So to create retail success today, you have to have a reasonable people to go there. And so everything from, you know, having music, this area that Steve referred to here as the entertainment area, could be overlooking what we're going to control as the pond and and just be landscaped further. This could be a band, it could be just small music venues, it could be wine tasting, art and so forth. We've also recently been approached, the Boutique Hotel out of Richmond, that it's a very, it's been very popular. They're just getting ready to open another one up in Charlottesville in the downtown area, and they have a strong entrance interest. As Steve said, the flexibility that we need, though, is if they don't want to be here, that is more considered a prime corner location and they would rather be in the town center. So if that were to proceed, for example, we may move the Boutique Hotel here. And and as Steve said, this may be the pond off, you know, a a major flagship office space there as well. So that's really my excitement, and I hope I I was able to share some of that vision and I'm certainly here to answer questions. Well, with Steve.
I'll start, I really like, you seem, it's a great development, you've got a lot of good positive feelings about it and a lot of support. But you have not talked about what your claims are for Stafford Drive there and completing connectivity. And that's that's real important to me as in this one person, but tell us, tell us, you haven't said much about that.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Stipe, so yeah, as part of when the Villas was subdivided off, one of the, I I've been here meetings with with council where we've had folks from Stafford Drive concerned about traffic, the width of the right way, the width of the road, and and getting in and out. When this was developed, or I'm sorry, when this was subdivided off, and part of this for the Villas of Pepper's Ferry was, there was a right way that was already dedicated along this side of the road. We will dedicate additional right way if necessary. Our our preliminary traffic numbers showed, well, at least have to have a taper, a right taper to get into this entrance. But we would be improving this section of the road with full sidewalk connections and whatever whatever road improvements Mr. Stipe should have to do for the turn lane.
From Pepper's Ferry to Point Stillard. So you're gonna widen, you're gonna you're gonna widen, you're gonna improve the width of Stafford Drive, including turn lanes and a sidewalk?
Our side of the road, yes, sir.
So we'll have two, two, eleven or twelve-foot lanes and a turn lane and sidewalk, know what you're saying?
We will have sidewalk for sure until we run a full traffic analysis. We don't, right now, I believe, and I'll pull that real quick, I believe it's showing with the generation we estimated here it was just gonna be a right turn or a right taper, a full turn lane and storage and taper. But again, anything with the intersection itself will be will be handled during the the site plan stage. But the idea is any road improvements that would be necessary for people getting in and out of our development would be constructed as part of this project.
But not back to, but not back to, to complete the picture. You've got three sides right here, and you've talked, you said all the right things, but my single reservation with this, and it's significant, is Stafford Drive from the connection of one fourteen back to your other developments in the back.
Oh, yeah, that that entire section of there, that that entire section will be improved up to the town standard it needs to be on our side, right?
Mr. Nelson, what would that be? On his side would be a? On his side, I want to know what the street's gonna look like.
Well, we haven't done any of that, they haven't done any analysis. So at a minimum, thirty-foot pavement section.
A thirty-foot pavement section here, I'm fine with that.
Because Mr. Stipe is basically saying, that's basically a single road, vehicle road right now. You know, two cars can pass each other, but you know, I think we're very, very tight, you know?
When we got Stafford, the original stage years ago, I believe, you know, some of the measures, we took, there might be areas weighing there are eighteen feet. It's on that eighteen to twenty, twenty-two feet. So it's not a town center, we all, we all know that. And that's, yeah, any of this section of road improvements right here would be necessary for this project.
And and that's my only reservation with this, and we have one chance to get this right right here now. We've talked for years about this and and we know that there's not interest by some of the the decent property owners who donate right away. But with this development, this is the time to get that right. And if y'all are willing to do that, that's my only reservation with this.
We we think it's crucial to the success of the project.
So we're gonna have thirty-foot pavement minimum and a sidewalk of some sort, pedestrian connection. That's my only reservation, I think it's a great, very, very great project, and thank you for that.
Because the residents have always said they define that to provide the road on their side. Because every time that they could have, they they define, right? Now, and so there's no way that they want to to work on 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 that, but that's why. But you guys think that you can do it on on their side of the road and keep or and and as a friend?
That is a problem.
Any of the, excuse me, the way the proppers rip, any of the road improvements that would be necessary for this project will be will be done by this project?
I would, well, it would, I'm just one person, but I would like to see some coming along too. But it's gonna be that section of the road with an minimum of at least thirty feet with a sidewalk as part of this project. And that's just a suggestion, I'm just one person, but that's my only reservation, and I think it's gonna help your development be, that's the whole. But that's, we have one chance to get Stafford Drive right, and even if it's just back there, it seems like a lot of the time to do that. So what I've got here, Todd, is a great, great project. You go up to one on two twenty, two five, then there, there's a lot of time.
So we've worked with Freeland and Watering, which is a different company. And they, we are still there, it's been incredibly successful. They did the development part of it, we're doing the homes.
It's a great project, it's a, I mean, it's nothing like this.
Very similar, as a matter of fact, I think we've been using it in the beginning. And thank you for mentioning that, I I actually forgot about it. Yeah, if you want to pull it up. What we're what we're seeing there and part of the success of it is that people want to live in a livable community. And there's a community right across the street from Daleville Town Center, it's called Ashland Plantation. And we're actually seeing people move out of that neighborhood, selling their homes that are on
And we're actually seeing people move out of that neighborhood, selling their homes that are on quarter acre, half acre lots. And, and that are relatively new homes and are moving across the street and purchasing equally priced homes, but so they can attend and they can walk to the coffee shop and they can walk to the restaurants.
Yeah, yeah, that looks great, I think that's gonna be great.
And so that's a photograph there of Burke, Burke Dale Village, just north of Charlotte. Which we, I've traveled around quite a bit over the last, it's just the same part of our vision and looked at a number of town centers from Richmond is Short Pump to Burke Dale Village. Looked at some stuff in Austin, Texas as well that we, and this is a good example, we're trying to create these sitting spaces outside and outdoors as well for people to gather.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has a question for that? Yes ma'am.
Do you have any questions? My name is Beverly Cook, I live at thirty Katy Lane, we are in Stafford Farms. I do not have a question, I would only like to speak for a moment on behalf of several of our neighbors, thank you. After spending thirty years in the marketing and sales field in Southern California, it appears from listening in the last hour and twenty minutes that Port Christiansburg is going to go through the same cram and jam situation that has taken place in Southern California. Oh, it sounds great and it sounds like a lot of fun. We have neighborhoods back there, or if no one has ever come and talked to us, would we like to have bands playing to all hours of night? Would we like to have five minutes from this place is where we live, where we have invested? We have found in Southern California where we had bought multiple properties, those that were in areas of single family homes gave us the highest ROI. Those that we had invested in, that soon thereafter it was approved and redistricted for multiple family cram and jam apartments, we lost our investment money. Why was that? Because the desirability factor went down by families who wanted to live in safe, quiet, single family neighborhoods. We invested in our neighborhood in Stafford Farms for that very reason. The best thing I have heard from the slick presentations tonight is that it's going to take eight to ten years or so to get it done because that gives us plenty of time to be able to sell and get out before this part of Christiansburg truly is gonna get done.
Thank you ma'am. Any other comment?
I have a comment. My name's Jeff Greenham, I live at fifteen Jesse Circle. And we're talking about Stafford Road, we live on the Stafford Road. And last time that this statesman home project, it was addressed about the width of Stafford Road and the minimum being below what code is. So he had the chance the first time to fix it right. And that section which is below code is between where it's not shown, which is Quinn Stewart to Al Meadow. He had the chance to do it right when he built the Adams and Peppersterry and you guys let it get away with it. So what I'm not caring to know is how we're gonna address from Quinn Stewart to Al Meadow, which is not on the map, which shouldn't have taken care of the width. All that we're carrying is we'll take care of it on our side on the development that leads up to Quinn Stewart. So if he does that and widens the road and gets you work started, you still have a fault left between Al Meadow and Quinn Stewart. So are you gonna backtrack and take care of that? Are you asking to do that now?
It's a comment, I'm gonna make sure she's.
I see the town manager is writing down these comments right now and he would be happy to, would appreciate it, you know?
But why wasn't it addressed the first way? I mean, that's when you get a chance. Because when that Adams and Peppersterry was being developed, all the construction would park on Stafford Road. They can stack road below a one lane highway so that those of us that lived there had to go to the headquarters right there in the road and say, hey, you blocked the road again, you called the police, they wouldn't come and do anything about it. And that's in the narrowest part of the road that's below code. So is there gonna be something done between Al Meadow and Quinn Stewart?
So with this project, the question was just brought up about construction traffic. So we do have a project that says construction traffic won't enter or exit the site through Stafford. So we're getting that off of there. I can't speak to the construction issues directly in regard to the Adams. But from a rezoning standpoint and an engineering development standpoint, what we did, if we would have had an entrance off of Stafford Drive into our development, we would have been having the same discussion we're having tonight. All of our access points into our development were off of Quinn Stewart. The right away has already been dedicated on that side, but we weren't required at that point by any, whether it be planning commission council or, or town code to improve a road that we weren't, we weren't putting traffic north of our development. Our traffic was coming in and out of Quinn Stewart. So that traffic flow, unless there was somebody that was visiting from further up north on Stafford Drive, we don't have any access points on Stafford from Quinn Stewart up to Al Meadow, so that was not part of our project.
So again, my statement wasn't about traffic, my statement was about the legal width of the road, which they constructed and put a paved path on there, which they could have taken up to widen the road when the Adams and Peppersterry was developed, which exists again between Al Meadow and Quinn Stewart. So if the opportunity was there to widen it and you just put a piece of pavement there to call a sidewalk, why wasn't it at that time utilized to widen it to the proper width? That doesn't have anything to do about cars, you went to a traffic study, go down there like tonight and watch at six thirty, your light between Quinn Stewart and Penn Express is already backed up. So you don't plan traffic to be impacted, I don't care what your study says, I could even traffic study, go sit out there right now. Now, if you lived it, you wouldn't know, it all sounds great, I'd be happy to if I was a developer, because I'm making bank.
Amen.
Or any more comments?
Just one, sir. My name is Simon Cook, I also live in Katy Lane and, in Stafford Farms. I go really go back to the Stafford Farm issue, it's the access out onto one fourteen. We've got a nice traffic light down at the bottom of the road off of the Quinn Stewart. But that really doesn't do us any good because that's gonna back up and create more traffic. If you've actually tried to get out onto one fourteen at a busy time with that light, you can sit there for five to ten minutes before you take your life in your hands to get into the center lane to get out. So those kinds of issues need to be addressed as well because we're just gonna get increased traffic onto one fourteen from this project. So that all needs to be taken into account if you're gonna be putting this kind of development in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna close now, now, is there another, I'm sorry?
Yes, I'm Gene Glachowski, I live in Windmill Hills. My wife and I moved to Christiansburg in twenty thirteen. We have seen this unusual growth in Christiansburg come about to almost be where we left. Richmond at Short Pump. The cycling of lights in that area is forty-five minutes to get out of your development. We, we live in Windmill Heights, we will be impacted by all of the improvement, or if you want to call it that, in the corridor that we're speaking of, the Peppersterry corridor between Churchwork and two new developments that are already there and the town center, we have a town center, Main Street, we have a Main Street here, we're trying to redevelop that. I just don't, I don't, I don't share the same vision, I don't see the same vision. I can let you speak to people who wait every morning for forty-five minutes to cycle out of their neighborhood to get on West Broad Street down in Richmond. It's, it's just not a real good way to start the day. We have a beautiful vision here, you can see beautiful sunsets and beautiful sunrises and, you know, to be sitting in traffic for an hour and a half, it doesn't give you the same temperature to enjoy that, so that's my comment personally.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm gonna go again. So my next question is this, if the population mostly lives now at this point in Christiansburg, then Price's, Peppersterry Road, when is there gonna be an opportunity to build a rescue squad on that side? If it's gonna, it takes, if you're volunteer, you're maybe, if you get called, you get your tons, ten minutes to get to the city down here. It's gonna take you another ten minutes to get to that new town center you're starting by developing. Twenty minutes before a call even gets deployed out. With the amount of traffic, the amount of traffic through downtown and all the extra lights that have been built. I have a friend who commutes to Blacksburg, he said twenty-six lights in the past twenty years have been built on his street. So what are you gonna do one day when we need more rescue squad down on that side of the town? Are we thinking that far ahead? Are we thinking that would be an amenity to our community? Not another development, not a hotel who's over four million to Walmart that's calling in. What does that mean?
Well, eventually there may be a emergency services station, of course it's fairly expensive proposition and it'd be a capital project. Emergency services station's probably five, five, six million dollars, but if there is.
There's gotta be something that you do with my double taxation already.
Yes.
I'm not really worried about the costs.
Yes, sir.
Once again, Gene Glachowski, I would like to know if any of the issue of wildlife been addressed? In, in our neighborhood, it seems to be getting busier and busier with all kinds of deer and the rest of the wildlife that are being driven up into the surrounding perimeter of farm and coming through the neighborhoods and it's, it's gotten quite dangerous in, in both of those areas of Diamond Point, Windmill Hills and the Majestic, the Majestic car also. Has that been addressed in the development of all of these properties on that side of Peppersterry?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that. On the other question that you asked, the fire department and rescue are, have purchased some land over near Dude's Food. And it is our plan to build an annex fire department and rescues floor there. And they feel that it would be advantageous to get to Peppersterry Road pretty quickly by taking the bypass and then cutting across. And so that is one of the reasons they are, would have been developed that first as our first annex there. And hopefully that will be, that definitely will be a help.
I wanna interject here, council's not weighed in on where we're gonna build our next, and it's a fire station, okay? But the property we do have from Happer Stats, so council has not decided where we're gonna build our next safety building, which will include rescue and fire and maybe even police, so we have not decided that, okay?
But we do have some options.
We do have options.
We have a direct option in the location that we mentioned, right, directly based.
So I think to answer your question, if it has been discussed and it is on the radar.
Good.
Is to make sure that that is being addressed.
Excellent. If you put a park there, right across from Quinn Stewart, I'm like, that kid's gonna need a day at Chris.
We're aware of that.
Now, we'll say staff, staff is pushing ahead, run a road, the next to Dude's crossing to get, get what's built. But council, we have not made a decision on that, we still have the Happer Stat property that they donate to us, and that's still an option out there.
Yes.
Just a last comment. I would just ask the town council and the mayor to really rethink if it's really to the benefit, to the quality of life for the citizens right here in Christiansburg, to have all of this cram and jam, fast moving, let's build it up, let's go, maybe it would be wise just to sit back a little bit. Spend some time up in the areas where the neighbor was talking about, several of the neighbors who are here. See what's up there and then really ask yourselves, is this really beneficial to the quality of life that we want for the citizens of our town?
I am going to close out paragraph D. In that paragraph, we discussed the rezoning of approximately twenty-eight point six acre property on B one, limited business to B three, general business with profit. And I'm gonna go down to paragraph D, which we have also covered. But basically this paragraph is dealing with the density of a development of approximately eighteen units per acre on a property located on four ninety-five Peppersterry Road Northwest, adjacent to Peppersterry Road Northwest, Quinn Stewart Boulevard and Stafford Drive and to B three general business. And I believe that we have covered that, but is there anybody who would like to say something more concerning that paragraph?
No, I'm sorry, just if council has any further questions, we'd be happy to answer, but this is a condition used for net we discussed in a torch party.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to just talk about the density of this development? Well, with that, then I'm going to close discussions concerning the states and homes. And I'm going to go down to paragraph cap. And this is a conditional use permit requested by Shaw Development for a planned housing development to consist of single family dwellings approximately located adjacent to Crystal Mill Road, Round Meadow Drive, Hutter Lane and north with Southern Railroad right away. And all this was formerly known as Meadows Golf Course and the Shepherd property in the R two, two-family residential district. And there's right up here to discuss that.
Good evening, Vice Mayor of Hartford, Councilmember, Mr. Tom Ruffage, I'm a project manager at Shell Development. Back this evening, we were successful in the past months in having properties rezoned from agricultural to the R two, two-family residential with profit, so those properties, you may remember were no two-family dwellings, they're all single, a single family, fifty-one lots maximum in general compliance with the development plan as part of the zoning process. In that, we'll call it master plan, and there were some flag lots shared that didn't meet the furniture requirements for R two. What we were trying to do was a cluster option in the, in the R two development where I can bring these lots closer together, smaller, reduce lot size and lot front. And during that, we've made some of those flag lots to go back, what we tried to do is we tried to have some majority density internally in the development. And you get into larger lots outside of that and then even larger lots around that. So of a hundred and twenty-six acres, we've got fifty-one housing units, single family housing units. So basically, two and an average, an average of two and a half acres per home. Part of the request also was we wanted to limit the road width in this development. The new road will go up if the town maintains street. And the current ordinance requires that to be thirty feet of width. Part of the master plan that was submitted to town, we requested to have the property brought into the incorporated area on town in Christiansburg back on August ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Nothing has changed, the lot size, the lot configurations, the number of lots, everything has stayed the same. And has this road width, what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a walk, a walkway community. There's a number of cart paths out there with golf cars, golf courses, we're incorporating that into these sidewalk systems. We're just showing sidewalks on both sides of the road. And we're gonna request council, the street committee, the street committee of council, that there be no parking on this road. And we're going to request council, the street committee, the street committee of council, that there be no parking on this road as well. So we've got a roll curve or what's, what's referred to as mountable curve. So part of our request is to have twenty-four foot asphalt paving. Then of the three foot mountable curb section, a foot of that is, a foot and a half of that on each side is, is drivable government. So basically what we're trying to do is we're trying to decrease the impervious surface. We're trying to bring the neighbors out, try to make a walk-in community, keep people parking off the road where it doesn't affect curbside recycling, where it doesn't affect trash service, where it doesn't affect emergency services. Planning commission, staff reached out to Chief Hanks. And I think he was concerned about the width of the road, but I'm not sure that he was aware of the request that as we develop this road to town standards, we, we do want to prohibit the parking on that street. That's not the field we're trying to create in this community. We're trying to get everybody in their drivers, on their lines. And that's our request here to drive. We did have a favorable vote for a planning commission, uh, with the exception of, I do want to, uh, I wanted to bring that to you on the tip, so I'm sure you're aware of it. We come down Silver Lake Road, uh, right now, it's just an eighteen-foot wide road. We turn on the Round Meadow Drive with Hutter Lane, this is a twenty-foot wide road. We don't want to open up to a cul-de-sac road, a thirty-foot width, just to create a, uh, a racetrack at the end of cul-de-sac, so to speak. It's not the field of the community that we're trying to develop. And that's reasonable request.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Any questions from the, uh, audience? All right, thank you for your help. I'm going to then close that portion, I'm going to close the public hearings for tonight. And, uh, open the discussion and action by the mayor and council. And, um, the first, first paragraph, the, the town of Christiansburg, community development block grant, consolidated plans, annual action plan. On the consent agenda? Okay. On the consent agenda? I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Then we're on the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve, uh, the items that are on the consent agenda? And, uh, let me read them all. Councilman Bennett for the September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. B, the approval for the change of totaling, uh, one hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six and forty-two cents for the North Franklin, uh, Storm Brook, uh, improvements project. C, scheduled public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen for community development block grant. Two thousand and eighteen consolidated annual performance evaluation report. And D, uh, scheduled public hearing on, uh, November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen for the ordinance for, uh, shared mobility system for, uh, higher, specifically addressing the operation of motorized skateboards or scooters, bicycles, long electrical powered, uh, assisted bicycles. And D, the reorganization of, uh, proclamations, uh, recognizing November first as extra mile day. So, uh, on the consent agenda, do I have anyone who would, uh, make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a, we have a motion to approve? All right, uh, Ms. Slipes, I believe we have the, we have the vote on this, please.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop? Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Ms. Slipes, I don't think I can vote tonight, since I haven't, yeah, so, okay. Maybe you would, uh, across me after that.
And Angie, I appreciate you saying that. I got a special.
I agree with you.
I would like, when we get into dinner, there's options, the presentation, since we passed, we're at nine o'clock tonight. We have a, we have a lot on there. And Dave, I appreciate you being here, trust me. And I think this is something that concerns us a lot, to learn more about it. But this is just me, I presented to council, can we bring Dave back for this presentation at a later date? Is there, is there a sense of urgency on that?
That council's discussion, if you want to.
Five public hearings at a certain time.
And I would almost do it for a second meeting in November, not a first, because these public hearings are coming for votes on that night. And I would assume there will be, uh, census and polling as well. And I, I do appreciate, I didn't even think of it at the beginning, but. Is that okay with council?
How, how long?
Can we, I think we've done the agenda.
I usually take over fifteen minutes.
Well, it might be better if you would mind coming back in the, in the first or second meeting of November.
And this, this was just something that council had asked us to, to come back at this meeting, so we wanted to make sure.
Okay.
We were prepared to do it.
Do you have anything, motion to work? We'll just table it until the second meeting.
All right. We have, uh, any citizen comments that would like to be made, to have them made? If there are no comments on, on the closing portion? Uh, committee reports, uh, Mr. Slipes and Mr. Collins, do you have a, uh?
Yeah, we have the short, uh, state committee, uh, report and action required by council. This is, uh, this is phase two, it's actually Mr. Robinson's development in the back. Behind Adams. And it's part of, uh, his, his development that he's looking on in the background, behind Adams, is, uh, residential development. His subdivision plat has been presented as for a total of forty-two minutes, out of a total of two blocks. That was part of the planned development that's been approved and the subdivision plat was prepared in complete accordance with the planned development, uh, the approved planned development that you know, see, acted on several years ago, a year ago. And so this plat is the culmination of that, you know, required for the continuity building of lots of convention. And it does conform with our subdivision ordinance and it is consistent with our approved plan, uh, development that we've taken action on. So the street committee recommends approval as the plat is presented, and that recommendation was made in the form of a motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Ms. Slipes, would you, uh, help us?
Councilwoman Bishop? Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
That is it, mayor, or vice mayor, please? Your majesty.
All right, I think now we're ready to go to discussion and action by the mayor and council. And the first one is, uh, town of Christiansburg, uh, community development block grant consolidation plan and the annual action plan for, uh, public hearing was held on, uh, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
I make a motion that we approve the town of Christiansburg community development block grant consolidation. We will have some. Second.
Any comment? Ms. Slipes?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop? Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, number B is a special advance permit, application for Christopher High School for their homecoming parade.
And Veterans Day.
And Veterans, right.
Hi.
Well, that'll be, uh.
Yeah, Mr. Bishop wants us to do that on a separate one.
Oh, okay.
So this is Friday, the homecoming parade is Friday, it's in New Orleans.
The homecoming parade is tomorrow.
I haven't seen you today.
And your council.
We're Veterans Day.
And your council meeting won't be until November twelfth, and Veterans Day is on the eleventh.
Yeah, we're going to cover that.
Okay.
The homecoming parade tomorrow.
Yes.
Tomorrow. So I make a motion that we approve the special events permit application for Christian High School, house, and homecoming. I'll second it.
And we have a second. All right, Ms. Slipes?
Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
All right, number C, petition for, to Circuit Court of Delaware County to appoint a special commission in regards to property at the Church of God in Christ property at the intersection of West Street Northeast and Johnson Street Northeast. And it was attached partial four ninety-seven dash, um, twelve, section three, dash sixteen A, partial oh seven oh four five one.
I make a motion that we approve the petition to Circuit Court of Delaware County to appoint a special commission in regards to property at Church of God in Christ property, uh, at the intersection of West Street, uh, Northeast and Johnson Street Northeast. I'll second it.
Ms. Slipes?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop? Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Now we go to, uh, paragraph D, resolution approaching and adopting the, uh, New River Valley Regional Water Authority, uh, second amended and, uh, restated water agreement.
I, I want to make a motion on this, but there was something I emailed, I believe council got it early, early today. There was a, and I don't have it in front of me, I can't, I guess, my computer's dead, but can you, there was a sentence, because most of this resolution is for reorganization, uh, naming, I believe, but there was a section almost as if we were approving the bond, which is the authorities, that's the authority in the.
Yeah, but the, the bond is part of the agreement. Um, essentially, that does the agreement.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Did I read it wrong?
No, you didn't. Uh, what happened was the bond council sent us a resolution to do both in the same way. When I looked at the resolution, I realized you had passed the amendment, you had done a resolution last meeting on the, uh, second amendment and restated water agreement. So, uh, Andrew and I worked on it this afternoon. What's in front of you is the revised resolution.
This is the revised.
And that rev- resolution is strictly to approve the bond issuance that the, of Water Authority has to do to continue their construction progress.
What's, what, what part was the, the new name, the language?
That was, you approved that last month.
We already did that.
Yes. Yeah, that, the last month, we, um, uh, there was the new name part of it and it was also, um, we took out a lot of the older language from where it previously would have been done, or had already been formed, or we were talking about it. It also, it also included, um, and Wayne will be able to explain this better than I can, but it included a map for Christiansburg, so that it simplified for Christiansburg, the, uh, extension of water lines, is that correct?
Please, we, uh, amended our water service map between the town and the PSA. We do not have to go back to revise this again. We have language in here that allows us to revise that map compared to how the people want to adjust our water service then.
It's already gone.
Approved.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution as presented, uh, revised, uh, as many of the state.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Ms. Slipes?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop? Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
We had a, um, four, four, one. Go to number E now, monthly bill list.
I make a motion to approve bills. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more, um, comments concerning the monthly bill list?
I'd like to just mention that, um, each time the monthly bills come up, I have voted nay. And I'd like to take just a moment and explain why. I am a huge proponent of keeping as much money local as possible. And I feel like when I do the monthly bills, there are still monies being spent outside of our area. And since I can't pick and choose which ones get paid and which ones don't, um, my response is nay. But it is nay because I want to encourage the town, um, to purchase more locally. They do have that choice on who they call. I just wanted to explain that to council, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Do you want to explain what we talked about in the audience meeting?
Do you think we're making progress in that area?
Oh, okay.
I got you. I sat in on that for a minute, go give us some purchase.
Brad, you want to take a shot at it?
Well, uh, it's very simple. Uh, each of, each of us here on council brings strengths and equal, equally non-strength, focus on the strengths. Each of us brings, you need strengths and perspectives here. And, uh, Ms. Sacks, since she's been on council, has been an outstanding council member. And she has brought her spotlight to an area that we, that she feels is important. I happen to agree that we need to, to do exactly what she's saying. So she's brought that focus, is really what it is. And Finance Committee debated, or deliberated tonight, and we are working with staff, uh, to do what we can do within the confines of the state procurement laws, which are very specific. So, uh, from the Finance Committee's perspective, uh, her, her interest is appreciated. And I think at least the Finance Committee, at the minimum, is interested in this as well. And we do plan to come back to council with some changes to our procurement policy. But they're, they're within the code of Virginia. And so I think, I would like to, I think that we're making progress in that area and give you credit for bringing that, you know, for spotlighting that. And so that's what I said, Mr. Shaw.
Don, I think it's great, you know, Mar, Marissa is a great chicken in the small business community, uh, with the Washington Army. It starts following down the path, but, um, we will be coming together as a council in a work session, when we decide to go over, uh, the new, uh, code of Virginia procurement and its brand. So that we understand what we're going to think of it at council and that that's going to turn over ten thousand nothing, ten thousand. I'm excited, Don, I'm glad we could help you with that mission.
I sat in on that for a few minutes and it, it, you would think it's something easy to rectify, but it's not. Uh, there's a lot of, lot of things to it and, and they really are, are working into it to try to make sure that both sides of the story are, are satisfied to some degree. And, uh, I appreciate what you guys are doing. Do we, do we vote on, um, on the monthly bill list, Alicia?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, so now to, uh, to vote on the monthly bill.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop? Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
All right, now we're going to go to the addition that we put in. And Mr. Bishop, do you want to help us on this, on, uh, information concerning the parade for the veterans?
Yes, we request a special event permit application for a street closure for the twenty nineteen Veterans Day Parade. I think it will be held on November the eleventh, twenty nineteen.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments? We have a motion and a second, do we have any other comments? Ms. Stipes?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks. Councilwoman Shawton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
All right, now we're gonna go to staff reports, and, um...
Thank you, appreciate it. Christiansburg High School thanks you and the veterans in our community. Absolutely, you guys have a wonderful evening. Oh, that's okay, you guys have a wonderful evening, thank you guys.
Mr. Wayne, do you have any comments?
I agree, uh, just what you may have to solicit for responses to this explicitation for legal services and practices, uh, what you may have the Finance Committee, I must briefly discuss those in the meeting, and we scheduled a meeting for next Tuesday at six o'clock, and we invited the last council to attend, if they'd like to debate discussions.
Joe, you bet, we would love to have you next Tuesday at six, if you, uh, are interested in that, we're gonna pull the list of proposals we received and decide what to do.
And then also, we want to schedule a public hearing for, uh, Milt and Solid Waste Chamber to improve the discongruence of the hospital service and, uh, adding the side of, uh, martial services, and we scheduled that to November second, that's a real... And, and, but you know, uh, we want to start immediately by the larger city of Solid Waste Committee, and the other committee also agreed that we should pursue this.
You say November second?
Sure, November twelfth.
Okay.
Any other?
That's it.
Attorney?
I'm closing.
Okay. Uh, any other staff members, have any comments? Same done, I'm gonna move on to, uh, council, uh, reports, and Ms. Stipes, we'll start with you, if you have any comments.
I do, um, I have two things to discuss, I hope that everybody had a chance to get by the Aquatic Center, we are super excited that the new love sign modification is completed, um, and the fiftieth anniversary of tourism, the Virginia's for Lovers, we had a chance for them to be in town during the unveiling, so that was quite an honor and excitement, um, and the second thing I wanted to bring before council is something that I've been working on ever since day one of council, you each have, oh, thanks, picture, yeah, so you each have a little email, um, that was sent a year ago, almost to the day, um, to Delegate Rush and Kane, and I'd like to just touch this in brief, because I want to make sure that you understand, um, where I'm coming from, if you were to be asked, if it's not a council request, um, because to make change for this has to go into more legislature, um, but before nine eleven, when a business accepted sales tax, uh, the state gave the businesses a discount, let me see, which was two, three, and four percent based upon how much your sales were, and once nine eleven hit, tragic event, they needed to pull some funds, um, they reduced the discount rate to all of the merchants in the entire state down to point eight, one point two, one point six, well, you know, we have recovered from nine eleven to some degree, but these rates have not changed, so every merchant in the entire state of Virginia is being shorted that discount that they're allowed, because we haven't raised enough stink to say, hey, come on, let's bring it back to the normal rates, um, and the purpose for this is that a major percentage of purchases are made by debit and credit cards, and they cost the merchant up to roughly three percent to process, well, that's not just the sale, they're also processing the sales tax, and so therefore, it is now costing merchants more money to collect tax on behalf of the state of Virginia, and it's not right to all of the businesses, not just small, but small, medium, and large, so this is a very major financial impact to every single business in the whole state, so I've started a discussion with the Virginia Municipality a year ago, and I've also talked to Delegate Rush, um, our town manager, who had offered support, but in the last year, I've learned a lot being on council, and just sending a letter doesn't get it done, um, so now I'm working to, uh, push a little bit further up the flagpole and get the support, and go to the state and fight on behalf of every business in the whole state of Virginia, um, so I just wanted to mention that to you so you knew where I stood on the issue, and then I'll be working on it, um, but do you have any questions? I'm here, just ask me, I'm happy to answer.
Can you break any base?
Thank you.
Ms. Stipes?
Once again, we get some insights that we don't have, because we don't, I don't collect sales tax, and that really is a big job, so thank you for that, and, and now I have nothing to add, so...
Tell them.
Mr. Peter? Central Base is tomorrow?
Yes.
Do you think I could get the...
I just have a couple of comments here concerning the Aquatic Center, and I'm not sure if you saw on TV today at four o'clock, but it was Channel Seven News did a piece on Susan Britner, and Susan is, um, seventy-six years old, and she is now the national champion in freestyling backstroke, uh, for the entire country, and they did a piece on her, and talking about, you know, how, um, having the Aquatic Center here has made it so good for her, and, you know, uh, they even, uh, the people on TVs stated that, you know, how, look at the shape she looked into, and, you know, the pool must have really been helping her, and on that regard, um, about five years ago, we started, um, working with second graders, and they come to the Aquatic Center three times during the school year, you know, a half hour of pool safety and a half hour of instruction, and then a half hour of, of enjoyment, and, uh, this year, the Christiansburg Middle School has the largest swim team that they've ever had, and they feel, one of the reasons is, is because of second grade program, and these second graders are now, this is the fifth year that they've had it, they are now going up into middle school, so they're probably in the late on in high school. Anybody else do have?
I've got just a couple things, I want to, uh, since we're getting ready, we're all going to go into class.
Yes.
Before we, because odds are where you guys may, um, you know, I don't know, okay, um, but I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Robert, thank Mr. Stipes and myself, that have, have filled in for the mayor, it's one of the toughest things you can do, it's easy for, uh, me to be a second will, uh, but I think you did a good job tonight, good job, and, um, when I was coming in, we have a couple Christiansburg High School students who are here, and if you would stand up, introduce yourself, and tell us why you're here, because I know you're not coming back.
Well, actually, we might, so, uh, this year, our school started the Teenagers for a Better Tomorrow Club, it is a political activism club within the school, uh, we do things such as, um, like we want, we want to write letters to Congress, we want to become more active in our community and figure out how we can help, and basically just the inner workings of everything, our president was supposed to be here today, but he is not, um, so we're here.
Yes.
Um, this club just started this year, it started by Ashlyn Levens and Natalie Miller, uh, Ashlyn is a junior, Natalie's a sophomore at Christiansburg High School, and it has helped, uh, it, our sponsor is Dr. Viviano, who is our AP English and Language teacher, um, but yeah, so...
I'm Natalie Jones.
And I'm Kayla Collins, we didn't do that part.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We are getting ready to get into a closed meeting, and I just wanted to, uh, state that, um, I appreciate you people sticking by, and by rambling in the last two hours, and, um, I don't know, uh, I don't think, uh, I think everybody will be happy to see, uh, Mayor Barber come back, uh, to the next meeting. All right. Now I'm going to, for a closed meeting, there's a request for a closed meeting in accordance with the Code of Virginia, two point two dash three seven one one, uh, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members and/or consultant permitting to an actual or probable litigation, which, uh, such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation and litigation posture of, uh, the public body, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss potential litigation with, uh, Gilveale Enterprises Incorporated, uh, regarding the Huckleberry Trail Christiansburg Extension Phase Two B, so at this time, we will, um, close the chamber, and, uh, we appreciate your company, and we'll take a long minute to get this over with. I'm sure you're taking a vote, you need to make a vote. I have a motion. And do we have a... I will take the ticket vote. All right, now the final break. I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, with the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as identified in the resolution that enter into closed meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other comments? I have a comment that I was going to do, and so I go, do I have to vote?
Yes.
Let's have a vote, thank you, Ms. Stipes.
Councilwoman Bishop. Councilwoman Collins. Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shawton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
I hear my final comments here, that I should have made before we went into closed meeting, and I was going to remind everybody that, uh, election day is coming up, and it is on the fifth of November, and it's important, some people just feel it's important to vote during presidential elections, but then a, um, the local elections are probably more important for people to get involved in, because it will have more of an effect on their lives and all, and the other thing I was gonna say was, our next meeting is gonna be November twelfth, and then we are gonna meet the very following week on, uh, November nineteenth, so we'll be meeting two weeks in a row here in November because of that schedule, and with that, does anybody else have any comments? Maybe a short...
Too many on here.
We should open up, we should open up with a prayer and close with a prayer.
I do have just one quick question, maybe for one more, I was trying to find it online, but do we follow progress for... I mean, I'm not seeing it today, but... So that is what, what we don't...
We are very loose. We're just like bobfish.
Uh, I'm, no, I'm sorry, I didn't do it.